Counselor Butler.
Let me go second.
All right, see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the committee of the whole meeting this morning, counsel heard from the deer committee and as such has requested to forward a request to this evening's meeting that counsel discuss the deer feeding bylaws. So I would like to make a motion to add that as a lead item on the agenda.
All in favor? Carrie, do we have any other additions or amendments? Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to have, under unfinished business, a correction to the water rates committee of wayne. It's just a matter of keeping.
Have a second. All in favor of adopting the agenda as amended? So carried. Can I have a motion for counsel to adopt the February 23 committee of the whole meeting minutes as presented? Counselor Crogg. Counselor Hammond.
Discussion.
Discussion. Counselor Butler.
We received an email today from a member of the public to amend their comments that were added to the minutes for this meeting. It was from the seminar. She wanted her statements to read, to remove the part that said, "to help determine rates" and to replace that with, "for helping make decisions." It's just a matter of housekeeping. She wanted that stated for the record. So it should say, "for helping make decisions," with regards to the water meters.
Thank you. Any other discussion or debate? Counselor Thompson.
That amendment is in accordance with what she actually said, I believe, on the report.
Mr. Mayor, we haven't confirmed that. So before we could do that, we would have to take it back. And whether it was a priority for us to deal with that, we couldn't make it a priority, or it could wait until we can bring it back to counsel at a later time. But it's going to take some time for us to go back in the video and do that with staff or council. So we have to determine when we're going to do that. I don't know, without looking and reviewing the tapes, if we could have made that recommendation to amend the agenda without confirming that.
So.
Could you refer to staff for more information regarding that?
Yes. So all in favor of the minutes as presented? That motion. So carried. Now, I have a motion for adopting the minutes of the regular meeting of February 23 as presented. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Yourship. I noted that the attachment of my report to these minutes is my report dated February 9th. I have made our management aware of this, and they have now attached the correct report to the February 23rd.
Aware of this?
Yes, they are.
So may I have a motion, please? Counselor Thompson, have a second. Counselor Crogg, any discussion or debate? All in favor of adopting the minutes? So carried. Well, now our reports from our members of counsel. We have our corporate officers present. We have our corporate, I guess, the unfinished business. Yes, we have the unfinished business in regard to that motion. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion where I had made the appointment to the Water Rates Review Committee, when the minutes were prepared, there was a small error in that John Mackey's name was added and Dan Zabinski's name was left out. And I would like to put forward a motion that those minutes, as I believe it was February 23rd, be amended to reflect the actual appointees.
Would you like to read back all the names again, or is it sufficient for yourself to have just the change in name? Maybe it would be preferable to read the whole?
Yeah, I can do that. So, the committee, or pardon me, the counsel appointed a select committee which included the following persons: Lynn Hansen, Bill Hindley, Nigel James, Mike Canigan, William Holm, Frank Trivari, Graham Watt, and Dan Zabinski, along with two members of the council.
Do I have a second on that motion? Counselor Ross, any further discussion or debate? All in favor? So carried. Our reports and questions. Do you have our corporate officers' report? CAO procedure bylaw, report from the council. All council reports given verbally delivered. So our reports from council, starting with Counselor Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On February 26, I volunteered for the Heart and Stroke Foundation's fundraiser at the Pearly Gymnasium. Many different fitness programs in Grand Forks gave a demonstration of their classes, and a nurse was on hand to take blood pressure and blood sugar levels. The event was well attended by the public and raised $176 for the Heart Stroke Foundation. On March 4, council had a special meeting to discuss the MAPS project. It was well attended by members of the community, and after hearing from a number of people on the status of the project, council voted to extend their lease to facilitate grant applications. Although council didn't amend our procedures bylaw at the last regular meeting, I have submitted a report to council and staff on my experiences at the LG LA seminar in Kimberley last month. Council's also been very busy reviewing the capital and operational budgets for the year with special attention being given to planning for future replacement costs of assets. As pipes, roads, buildings, and equipment ages and depreciates in value, it's important to put money aside to plan for the future replacement costs. This might mean that there's less money to spend on wants in the short term, but it's important to make sure the money is available for the needs of the future councils. Thank you.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Yourship. My report is currently lengthy tonight, so I'll ask you to bear with me. As I advised at the February 23 regular meeting, this is a report on my attendance at the 2015 elected official seminar held in Kimberley, February 18 through 20. Gary McIsaac, Executive Director of UBCM, attended the seminar and introduced Richard Taylor of Local Government Leadership Academy. Together, they presented the workshop on the W's of elected officials: who you are, why you're here, and what you wish to accomplish. The 24 elections had a low voter turnout provincially, 10 units of councils were acclaimed, and 45 are newly elected. George Beetham, while regarded across Canada as an expert in local government, was the keynote speaker. Mr. Cuff's talk included strategies about setting a tone at the top, setting priorities, governance, policies, roles of council and management, and the need to respect the professionalism of management. He said that well-qualified staff are a blessing. He also recommended that council take the time to ponder, work collaboratively, and that as a council, we need to support each other. I attended the workshops for interning elected officials. Gary McIsaac presented on the UBCM funding program. He advised that the gas tax fund is distributed 75% to the Community Works Fund and 25% to the Strategic Priority Fund. Community Works Fund grants are delivered two times a year to municipalities who are successful in their applications for eligible projects. Strategic Priority Fund grants are for large-scale infrastructure projects that have a regional impact and that are innovative. The distribution of these funds are application-based outside the Greater Vancouver Regional District. Mr. McIsaac also discussed the New Building Canada Fund, a national program. The federal government has committed $190 million over 10 years that local governments and provincial governments need to match. Projects eligible are similar to those of the gas tax fund, with the exceptions being recreation, sport, tourism, culture, and capacity building. Gordon McIntosh, President of Local Government Leadership Institute, gave an excellent overview of the roles, responsibilities, and teamwork, and the art of working together. He divided his presentation into three separate parts: the ideal, roles and responsibilities; the reality, hourglass and local government functions; and collaboration, preventative and remedial strategies. Dr. McIntosh conducted a workshop titled Seeking Confidence: Strategic Decisions and Priorities. He began his presentation by asking each participant to complete a behavioral patterns inventory. He then reviewed a decision-making model, a flowchart, and discussed some problem-solving difficulties. He also discussed the issue of balancing competing demands with limited resources and offered some recommendations that could be useful in priority setting. Sandra Carter and Pam Jeffcoat of Val Prilaw Group conducted a legal clinic regarding council board members as individuals. Some delegates were asked to participate in a mock public hearing that included issues of conflict of interest, liabilities, in-camera confidence, and personal bias. While the hearing was entertaining, it certainly profiled the difficulty that elected officials could find themselves, perhaps unwittingly involved in. Leanne Crane, CAO of the East Cooten Regional District, gave an overview of the history of representation when voting of regional districts. Advantages of regional districts is shared services and low-cost borrowing to municipal finance authorities. It was noted that regional districts do not tax for policing or roads. Richard Taylor from the Local Government Leadership Academy moderated a panel on local government partnerships and collaboration. Terry Melsner, President of Local Government Management Association, Grace Bandenbrink of the Ministry of Community Sport and Cultural Development, and Laura Schwagel from the DCS Second Authority discussed the roles, responsibilities, and relationships with partner governments and agencies. Municipal Finance Authority, Municipal Insurance Association, and the DCS Second Authority are the major partnerships local governments work with. A local government mentoring panel, including Director Cam Cunningham from the Central Cooten Regional District, Nelson's Mayor Deb Cosap, Alfred's Mayor Dean Caratur, and Invermere's Mayor Jerry Taft. These veterans shared their experiences and knowledge of being in local government. Jan Annes, an expert in communications, conducted two workshops. The first dealt with clear, consistent, and effective messaging. She advised that messages should be clear and concise. The second dealt with improving decisions to citizen engagement. This workshop provided some excellent pointers on effective ways of getting the message out. She said one hour of good plotting saves eight hours of dealing with issues. Nora Stolt from Hays Group made a presentation about the art of media relations. Topics included where people get the news, building trust with the media, and the public and preparing for intervention. Christina Van Teed, former mayor of Golden, who now has her own business offering strategic solutions, led a workshop that engaged her in life. The pickballs of political life and how to avoid them. Two things she said that truly resonated with me were, one, be a role model for your community, and, two, candidates don't define who you are. They are only yours temporarily. I appreciated the opportunity to attend the 2015 elected official seminar, and I'm confident that I can put into practice much of what I hear.
Counselor Rorschegian is not present this evening. Counselor Crogg.
I didn't turn it on. I don't have a counsel report.
Thank you. Counselor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. March 4, we attended a special meeting with a large delegation from MAPS, and the decision was made to extend the lease for 10 years, providing that the funding was in place and there's two weeks given for public notice, so public will have an opportunity for input, and then council will make a final decision based on that. In the afternoon, we attended a budget briefing. March 5, I attended a deer committee meeting. We had some concern. We've had some concerns from residents that have noticed a couple of deer that have chafing on the neck because of the collars. And so at this meeting, we had our provincial wildlife biologists attend, the two of them. And they went that morning and observed the two deer in question and decided to remove them. So they will not be being replaced on those two deer, but the one deer was killed shortly after the monitor was put on. Two deer are now having their collars removed, so there's six remaining, and we have a one-year contract with the company that's doing the monitoring, so we'll carry out the balance of the year. The reporting has been consistent with the deer. They haven't, they're not fluctuating. The deer that, their movements are marginal. They monitor it at 7:00 in the morning and at 7:00 at night, and they're not seeing a lot of migration in or out of the city. They're staying. April 21, which is a Tuesday at 6:00 a.m., will be the next deer count. So we'll be at dawn looking and counting, organizing the deer count. There was a motion passed that proposed that the deer committee encourages organizations to support funding to protect the, encourage organizations to support funding to protect the gill from grass lines by providing fencing to keep cows out of the nature's trust property. And that was passed, primarily to protect the property and to give the deer back some feeding ground, because they really don't have any place to go because the cattle are eating all their food. We also made a motion to direct staff to enforce the no-feeding bylaw, and that was passed today. That has to be enforced before the provincial government will allow any permits for any sort of a cull. That's just due diligence that we have to do. We can't, we can't request a permit to cull any of the deer until we've shown that we've enforced the no-feeding bylaw. We also requested, and Gary Smith was here today, to request from the city $50,000 towards the deer committee for 2015, and that was passed. Tomorrow at 10 o'clock, council have been invited to do a walkabout at the proposed MAP location where the new habitat restored is planned to be built, and the tour of Whispers of Hope and the Beths. So I know I will be going down there tomorrow morning to take a look at the facility. And one of the other things that I think might be of interest to this community, and we haven't discussed it as a group, is the Communities in Bloom. So I'd like to talk to council and the communities, see if anybody is interested in participating or having grantors participate in the Communities in Bloom project. We have, they sent us the deadline for registration, which is March 31. I don't know whether it's been discussed at previous conferences before, but we can check with staff and find out whether it's been something that we thought we might want to do.
Counselor Ross.
Thank you. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I was away for the last meeting, so this report is sort of an amalgamation of my report that I would have given at the last meeting and what has happened since then. But I would like to begin my report today by acknowledging International Women's Day, which was yesterday on March 8. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank and honor my mother and my sisters and my daughters, my amazing female friends, a couple who are sitting in this room tonight, and colleagues who have mentored me and guided me, inspired me, graciously corrected me, and loved me throughout my ongoing journey. So I'd just like to take this opportunity to acknowledge women in leadership and encourage that. Over the past two weeks, and since the last council meeting that I was unable to attend, several interesting and positive events have occurred. So I'm talking about the past month. Foremost, the hiring of our CAO, Mr. Allen, has quickly resulted in numerous positive outcomes. Therefore, I also want to take this opportunity to thank Diane Henrick, our corporate officer, and our deputy corporate officer, Sarah Winton, for the work they did to support me and the council as we found our feet in our new roles over the past three months. I would like to say that their patience and their incredible grace cannot go unacknowledged. So I just want to say thank you to Ms. Winton, Ms. Henrick, and a warm welcome to Mr. Allen. And I also attended the Local Government Leadership Academy Conference in Kimberley in late February, and I won't go into too many details about what happened or in that educational opportunity. Because what was more important for me at that event was the networking and the interaction with other councillors and mayors throughout our region, including Burney and Golden and Kimberley and Revelstoke, Roseland, Castle Guard, Nelson. And it was really important to me to interact with them during the breaks, during the dinner, to sit with them during the workshops, and hear from them, and to learn that they all struggle with similar issues that we face here in Grand Forks. We were able to discuss matters that go far beyond dogs on Baker Street or sledge management. And that's not to say that indeed these are truly important issues, because they are. And I'm not making light of the need to address issues that are close to our hearts, to your hearts, and that I'm not saying that infrastructure in all of our communities is badly in need of repair and maintenance. But time and again, outside the formal conference, outside the current, formal conference agenda items, the topic of this year's snowpack was discussed. Because in each one of these communities, including Grand Forks, our snowpack is important, not only in terms of recreation and tourism, but in terms of water and fire danger and planning for the next season. There is a growing concern about fire danger, possible water shortages, and our collective awareness of what is now being called on a global scale, climate chaos, not just climate change or what they want to mean. And certainly, I believe, and many people share my belief and conviction, that climate change is the main issue that must be on the table as we move forward as a city, a region, as a country, and as a global community. Decisions must be made looking through a lens that considers the stewardship of our land and our resources, so that our children and my grandchildren will look back upon us and judge us either according to our grief or according to our wisdom, our courage, and our forethought. A quick fix in terms of what we decide to fund or not fund, or economic development for short-term profit, the promise of low-paying, temporary, unsatisfying jobs are not solutions that we want to consider. We must do the heavy lifting now, so that our children and their children do not have to carry a burden that will certainly be simply impossible to bear. Meanwhile, back at City Hall, we met on March 4 to hear from the MAP delegation, the Multiple Assistance Accommodation Project. And I was heartened and humbled to see a united team of men who share an obvious commitment to reaching out and assisting our community members who struggle with serious issues that are often life-threatening. Later that day, we worked with our CAO and our financial officer as we moved forward thoughtfully and respectfully on our 2015 budget, and Counselor Butler talked a bit more detail about that, so I won't go into it here. And that is ongoing for us, and will be coming forward soon, with a second and third reading on that. I'd also like to take this time to thank Shem Wires, another woman in leadership, for sharing with me notes and minutes from the most recent environment committee meetings. This is obviously something that I am deeply interested in and hope that we can pursue as a community as we look forward and plan. I'm also motivated to learn what pickleball is all about, and I want to thank you, George, for bringing that forward and educating me on that. It looks like a lot of fun. And in closing, I must believe that somehow, together as a community and as human beings, that we can make healthy and courageous long-term choices about our community, and that won't always be popular. These choices will not only be about our community, but they'll be about our environment, so that our essential needs are met, and simultaneously healing our climate and our broken social and ecosystems. And that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report other than, if I may add, echo Counselor Ross's statement of welcoming Mr. Allen to our organization. He is definitely a vital asset to our corporation, and I'm sure he will give us lots of help and assistance in our future years. I'd like to thank all the councillors for their reports, and may I have a motion to receive the reports from counsel? Counselor Thompson, may I have a second? Counselor Crogg? All in favor? So carried. Now move on to Counselor Crogg's report on the RBKB. Counselor Crogg.
There we go. Since the last meeting, like it's the time of the year for budgeting, and I've attended a lot of RBKB board meeting as well as other subcommittee meetings, and they're all focused on looking at the budget for 2015. So on February 25, I attended the West Cooten Boundary Hospital District meeting, and we had a tour of the Nelson Hospital, or Cooten Lake Hospital. Every time we hold one of those meetings, depending on where the area is, we're actually going to be touring those facilities that we look at. And I'm not sure if everybody understands that Hospital District is in charge of funding in partnership with the IHA, Province IHA, for capital, capital infrastructure, so like machines or a new site or another wing on a hospital, and we end up paying 40%, and the government pays the other 60. So we were looking at our capital budgets. I attended a protective services and a board meeting in Trail, and protective services is the emergency response that we would see from all of our governments together and our emergency operation systems, that type of thing. On the 5th of, or that was on the 26th, on the 5th of March, I attended a BDC meeting and Kettle River Steering Committee meeting. And again, it's, everything's about putting the budget together, approving the budgets. Tomorrow, I won't be able to attend the orientation at the MAPS facility, because I'll be at a boundary stakeholders' finance meeting. There are a lot of services within the boundary, some we partner with, some we don't. Example would be the Example would be the Greenwood Area Cemetery Service. It has nothing to do with the city of Grand Forks. But we're going to be looking at the budgets for the Grand Forks Naryade Recreation, Boundary Museum Services, the Arena, the Curling Rink, the Aquatic Center, Animal Control in the Boundary, uh, the Library in Grand Forks, Mosquito Control. And as we saw this morning, we'll also be talking about the budget for Boundary Transit. So basically, nothing's been finalized yet. We're still in the process of putting it together, and then I'll bring more information. A lot of the requisitions are probably going to stay the same, but I can't say for sure until it's finished. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Counselor Krog. May I have a motion to accept Counselor Krog's report? Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammond? All in favor? So carried. Well, now move around to our recommendations from staff for decisions. First item is the request for early budget approval and ability to sole source for labor and materials in order to complete the project in 2015 for the Rotary Spray Park. Counselor Thompson? That motion?
Uh, I would put forward a motion. I would like to put forward a motion that, um, Council approved the request for Rotary for an early budget approval of the $200,000 to Sidesales Reserve Fund, uh, and also that, um, we waive our purchasing policy and allow Rotary to sole source labor and materials to complete the Spray Park in 2015.
I have a second, Counselor Krog. Debate, discussion. Counselor Butler?
Just for the benefit of the public that were in here this morning, we did see a delegation this morning that went into the details of the funds for the Spray Park, and I think Council was fairly satisfied with that presentation. The $200,000 has already been put into our budget for this year, and, uh, and the Rotary has done a lot of fundraising as well, so I would support the motion.
Any other debate or discussion? All in favor of the motion? So carried. Our second item is the Parapulcan Bench, the request for assistance with the placement of the Parapulcan Bench on the Observation Mountain Trail. Can I have a motion from Council for the request? Counselor Butler? Counselor Hammond? Debate, discussion. Counselor Ross?
Um, Grand Forks is becoming increasingly known for its, its trails, and it's an important part of our economic forecasting and planning and promotion of our area, our gorgeous area with our fluffs and our trails. Very accessible. Um, I think it's really an important part as we move forward in the future and increasing, encouraging healthy activities and family activities and accessing the wilderness in this time of a lot of people sitting in front of the TV watching reality shows. So I just think it's a really good idea, and I look forward to helping to haul those items up to the summit and participating in putting that bench up there. I support this motion.
Any other debate? Counselor Butler?
Just to reiterate for the public again, um, in keeping with our grant and aid policy, I don't believe Council is in a position to donate any money to this project. It would be in-kind donations that we would be giving in, uh, in the terms of service, like Counselor Ross said, carrying the equipment up there or with cement or that type of thing. So I think we're all in agreement on that.
Counselor Thompson?
Um, thank you, worship. Do you need to, having amended the motion to authorize the placement of that bench on city property? Or is that not necessary?
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe that that's necessary. I believe that we can, uh, once the approval of the bench is made, then we could work with them to find the safest location up there for that. So I believe they have that full intention of making a very safe location, but, um, you know, we'll just work with them on that.
Thank you. Any other debate or discussion? Counselor Hammond?
I just think one of the important key elements to this is the fact that this is a memorial to Peter Parapulcan, who was a long time, very long time businessman in Grand Forks, landlord, sat on many boards and chairs, and contributed a lot for this community. So I think the fact that it acknowledges him and it's going to be his bench is, is key to this. So I'm in favor of that.
Thank you for that. Any other debate or discussion? Counselor Krog?
Oh, I feel left out if I didn't say anything, because everybody else has. Yeah, I thought this morning we'd also had the understanding that staff was going to go up there and have a look and do the look at the placement, that type of thing. And echo what Counselor Hammond was saying, uh, help Mr. Parapulcan, and the fact that the bench, as I said this morning, is a good tribute, because it's on a trail that he supported and made donations in the name of other members of his, his family too. So I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Any other debater questions? All in favor of the motion? So carried. Our next item is that Council considers a request from George Longden on behalf of the pickleball players to convert one tennis court at Barbara Ann into a pickleball court. May I have a motion for that? Counselor Ross? Counselor Hammond? Debate, discussion. Counselor Ross?
Um, okay, so, um, Mr. Longden came to Council this morning and made a request or a presentation on the growing popularity of pickleball. And, um, I think it's a great idea, and I really think it's, looks like a really super fun game. And looking at the demographics of our community, I think it's very appropriate. Uh, I was a little bit concerned about the dollar value of the project. Uh, I think it was $16,000, potentially $15,000 to convert completely, and I think that might have, didn't include resurfacing, complete resurfacing. So since this morning, having a little bit more time to think about it and hearing the discussion this morning, potentially like the cracks in the, so it's one tennis court at Barbara Ann, and out of one tennis court, we get three, four pickleball courts. Wow, that's a good deal. So what I thought would be okay was if we could just fix the cracks so that nobody's tripping, tripping over cracks, so that, you know, so we have the true bounce of the ball. And just, so the pickleball courts will be perpendicular to where the tennis court, the way the tennis court lines are paged. So if they are a completely different color, then it should reduce the confusion about what's pickleball and what's tennis court. And then, so the biggest, the biggest expense is going to be painting the court, fixing the cracks, painting the court, and doing a cost assessment breakdown on the net, posts and nets. So I would, I would like to ask for that specific cost breakdown. So we're just doing basic, like not resurfacing, repairing cracks, painting the new lines on for the court courts, and a cost for the posts and the, and the, um, uh, nets, and then exploring what options we have for recreational grant funding to help to fund that.
If I may just refer this back to staff and especially our CIO, Mr. Allen, could you comment on this?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The, uh, I think the approach that, uh, that was, was kind of discussed today was the concept is here now, uh, the idea is here. I think one of the things that Council might want to consider is seeking the public feedback to see what the tennis court, tennis players have any objection to something like this. Get a balanced approach and feedback, and then ultimately, uh, work with the, uh, work with the pickleball folks over some short-term solutions that are somewhat manageable for us, uh, and then report back to Council on that and the long-term plan. So I think some of the short-term things that we'd want to fix is, you know, they pointed out some of the cracks and things in the courts. We'd like to figure out what the costs are for, for making this, the courts playable for pickleball. Once we determine that the tennis players don't have any, uh, any objections, they may show up next week and say, well, you know, hang on a sec, we really want to see this kept for tennis play. Uh, I think that, that would be the best approach for us to, uh, to pursue on behalf of Council, and then report back to you once we've heard back from Mr. Longden and the other groups on, uh, some more information.
Any other discussion or debate? Counselor Krog?
Yeah, it was mentioned during the delegation, but I never did hear a, a final answer to it. Is part of the cost that we need, is it to, um, put a fence between the tennis and the pickleball, um, because they are perpendicular? So our overshot law is going over there, so it's part of that plan to have a, um, a fence between the two. Through you, maybe you could see if somebody could answer that.
Again, Mr. Allen?
We would bring that part as, I think we would want to bring the pickleball folks and bring that back as part of the overall, uh, because there's a grant available for something like this to be created, that we'd want to explore what the opportunities are with the courts.
So we have a motion to consider the request, strictly to consider it. All in favor of that motion? And we could make a motion to refer it back to staff for consideration in costs?
And report back to Council.
Exactly. So can I have a, all in favor of the first motion to consider it? So carried, so some motion forward, please. Counselor Thompson?
Exactly.
Counselor Krog? So all in favor to send it back to staff for pricing and consideration, and then we'll come back to Council. All in favor? So carried. Make it ball. On the information items, there's a letter request for financial assistance for the B.C. Youth Parliament. Could I have a motion to receive this for information and discussion? Counselor Ross? Counselor Hammond? Debate or discussion? Counselor Ross?
Um, I think it's really admirable that our young folks are getting more civically minded and wanting to engage more in, in, um, educating themselves about politics and just how the world works. We've really neglected civics in our education system over the past couple of decades. I'd say even the past three decades. And, um, I, I, I really do, I really want to encourage this kind of scholarship in our community. So I would like to at least take it for consideration right now. I don't remember if there's a deadline for this, because we just received it, and, and I'm not sure what it would come out of, what budget area it would even come out of. But I think grant, I think scholarship opportunities like this, especially when it's around civics, is something that I would really like to begin to encourage. It's the session planning for leadership.
My apologies, the information item was from Mr. Jacob Nosworthy.
Yeah, that's exactly, yeah. That's what I was talking about.
No, I didn't mention it.
Oh, great, okay.
Counselor Butler?
Very new, Mr. Mayor, to staff. I'm just wondering if this is in keeping with our grant and aid policy?
Mr. Allen, can you rep?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the, the community grant and aid policy, you offer some scholarships that go to the high school students that are progressing off for secondary education, or sorry, for post-secondary education. The, uh, the grant and aid policy does not have identified this as a, uh, something that Council would endorse. So at this point right now, you don't have that in your budget. That being said, uh, in the future, if Council wanted to consider to amend the finance or the, uh, the grant and aid policy to include, you know, a scholarship for something that was too directly related to government for support of youth in your community, that would be something that you could consider as a future motion, as a notice of motion to bring back to Council. But right now, your current policy doesn't amount for it.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Counselor Hammond?
Um, I'm not reading correctly. I wasn't, I don't see that it says scholarship. I'm going against them. Okay, it, it talks about the operating budget of the B.C. Youth Parliament, and they, they depend on private donors to help fund their projects. I, there is an amount there of $10,000 that's their operating budget, but I'm not sure if that's for the whole project, um, whether they're looking for $100 or $1,000. I'm not sure. I think this is, I think this is great. I know Jacob, and I think, um, it is very admirable that he's taking an interest in civic politics, and I'd like to see him succeed and, and forward. I think maybe we could get some more information on the exact amount that he's looking for, whether there is a specified amount. I also would like to extend this a little bit further and perhaps have Council consider, um, Jacob as a youth counselor in our community. He is the Minister of the Interior, a member for Boundary, some alchemy for British Columbia Parliament, so he's, um, he's done well for himself at a young age.
Counselor Thompson?
Uh, yes, thank you. I too, um, think this is a wonderful opportunity, and, um, Jacob has attended, I believe, now two sessions in Victoria as a, as the Youth, Youth, uh, Parliament. But I would like to invite him to come and make a presentation to Council on this particular issue and what it is he's looking for in terms of financial support before we could make any, um, I would be considering any recommendation or consideration.
Counselor Krog?
Here comes the dream squishing. I, I appreciate what, um, this young Mr. Nosworthy has, has done. He's attended these council chambers. He was watching the election. He has a keen interest. He's, he's recognized throughout that political area. But we don't have a grant and aid policy. Should there be more inclusion of young people and, and, um, females as Counselor Share Wires was, was promoting? Most definitely. But who should actually be paying for it? Should it be a local government trying to fund and send one individual off to this? Or because it's a, um, there's junior parliament and the federal levels, shouldn't they be supplying that? So I see it as a, just another, um, thing they want us to fund, but it's their business. Right? So I would, um, if it comes up for a presentation, I wish them all the well, and, um, I would donate out of my pocket to a fund, but I don't think the taxpayers should be doing that.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
And that's why I want to invite him to make a presentation to Council.
So that we can say no in person?
I, I leave that to you, Counselor Krog. It is a privilege.
Counselor Ross?
Um, I, I, I really understand what you're saying there, um, Counselor Krog. But I don't like to say that they're not doing it, so we're not going to do it either. I think that taking a leadership at the, at the, really at the grassroots community level is just what we have to do. Our federal government, our provincial governments have disengaged themselves from the grassroots, and they turned their back on civil society. We have built C51 now, being jammed through Parliament, which is continuing, that's even further restricting our civil liberties. And I really like the idea of... And I really like the idea of encouraging our youth at home. This is where they live. This is where we live. We live together. And it's called taking care of one another and encouraging one another face to face. Um, uh, so that when we're walking down the street and we see the youth that we want to support, they know us by name. And I think let's take responsibility here and let's have a succession plan. There's a good chance that young Jacob may not settle in this community. But what we invest in him, in his education and the encouragement he gets, because people in leadership in Grand Forks and the community in Grand Forks encouraged him and supported him, is going to impact him for the rest of his life. And there's a good chance he's going to run for a local city council and he's going to make a wonderful difference at a grassroots level. He may run as an M L A. He may run as an M P. Who knows? He might run a prime minister one day and he's going to say, when I was a young guy over in Grand Forks, that local city council got behind me and they gave me a few hundred bucks. Uh, I just think that's something we need to start doing as a habit, is as a pattern, is starting to encourage our youth. Yeah, and, um, and I too would support him out of my own little pocket. But I think it's really great when the local government, the local leadership, um, gets behind our youth because it is our succession plan. Because we may end up with some, um, somebody amazing, some young woman who was supported in their community somewhere else and comes here one day and puts down this here and gives back to our community because our community gave to her.
Counselor Crogg?
And I agree somewhat with, um, some of the, um, discussion points. It doesn't fit our policy. We, we don't have a grant and aid policy. And when we did have a grant and aid policy, it was, um, one of the stipulations was it couldn't be for a person. Right? And I, and that's probably why this letter says to the Congress. So, so we're not individually supporting Jacob. We're supporting, um, an organization and that organization should be funded by the government. And don't want to be a total buzzkill, more than I already am, but what about the people that we dislike now in government that, that are taking away our civil, civil liberties? Um, so you can't say for sure, um, when you enter politics, what kind of a politician you're going to be. We all say that we're going to be dedicated and honest and, and all of that other stuff, but, um, especially as you climb the ranks, climb the dung pile to the top, that seems to get lost and people get even crazier. And like I said, he's awesome. He's taken this interest, but it doesn't even fit our policy. So unless we're going to do that, and then what about next week and next week and next week and next week? Um, yes, we support our youth and, and just like the, the bench thing, as was stated earlier, like we can't give them money. We can give them in-kind support or, or we could participate in any fundraising that they may do. But I don't think the taxpayers, um, need to fund that. Right? If, if that was the case, then shouldn't they be funding somebody to go to aerospace college? Shouldn't they be funding someone to go here?
Counselor Butler?
My microphone's not working, but, uh,
Who's flush?
I agree with both of what the councillors have said here. Unfortunately, I see a lineup starting to form out that door. If we start handing out money to one person, no matter how valuable their cause, it's not going to end. And we have this poster up on the board here that talks about boring things like pipes and electrical systems. And that's our main priority to this town and to the taxpayers, is to keep those essential services running and we're having trouble with that right now. When you look at amortizing it over the next 20 years, we've got to start putting money away for that. So unfortunately, like I said in my report, we have to say no to some of these things that are really wonderful and valuable and stick to the main priorities, sorry.
Oh, my God. Counselor Ross?
Another hot topic.
Two things I'd like to speak to, policy and politicians. Policy is organic and, um, it's funny how we had money for a vinyl banner to go across the street. To promote. But I think it was just amazing, a thousand dollars. You know, like, wow, a thousand dollars for a for-profit car show. And, but we don't have any money. We, this can be done. You know, we say, what are these politicians going to turn out to be? I can tell you what kind of politician we can model, politicians that support our youth. We model. They, we model what, what our youth will be. And we model caring, gracious, supportive human beings that are in leadership and are nurturing our future leaders. We start at home and we, we do it in our community. You know, like what, you know, like there's, there's other funds. I go, we don't policy for that. You know, it's amazing what, how we can create policy with just a motion and that becomes a resolution. It becomes policy. And it's, it's a will of the people. It's, uh, you know, don't we have a, you know, an ad hoc fund or a, a, some sort of discretionary? It's usually most organizations have a discretionary fund. Like, I don't remember. What is the vinyl banner? What was the policy around that?
Community events or?
Community events. You know, and you have a, you have a, a limit so that if we support a youth doing a civic activity and the limit is fifteen dollar, fifteen hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, put a figure on it, per annum. They have to have their application in no later than March 31st. And we decide, they, they make a presentation, we decide to give each one five hundred dollars or one of them five hundred dollars for a maximum of X number of dollars per year out of, uh, an education civic scholarship fund. Like, wow, that's not difficult. So I just think we model what politicians are and we create policy. It is organic and we can do it.
Counselor Thompson?
Thank you. One of the biggest complaints in, in this last election and, and previous elections is the low mode of turnout. And the fact that our youth do not participate.
I wonder why.
In, in, um, in, you know, most elections. Um, and in order to encourage that and engage the youth, we need to encourage them, um, to become involved, uh, to, to become engaged. And I, I, I hear what you're saying, Counselor Crogg, and I, 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 I hear what Counselor Ross is saying. Um, and, and both, both arguments have merit. What I would like to do is to have Jacob Noseworthy make a presentation to council with regard to what these funds would be used for if they were gratified as city, or if we could assist him in generating sufficient funds to, so, so that this youth parliament can continue. We have to start somewhere. And if, if it's little Grand Forks that steps up to the plate to, to assist this, then I think better less.
Counselor Crogg?
Last grant. I won't even go into school scholarships, so we're going to leave that alone. Um, and I agree with, with a lot of the stuff that's been said around the table, mostly with what I said. But I do agree with, with what other, um, people are saying. It's an individual. So we're not, like, I supported the banner. Um, I know that it's a hunk of oil and I know it's for gas guzzling awesome cars. But every resident in this city has the option to go down there for free, to enjoy all the vendors, to see all the cars, to interact. They, they, I think even last year, they brought down the silver kettle bus. So that as, as opposed to, and, and that was taken out of a community events budget, I believe. Um, this is for an individual. Now, if this, if the request was to hold this conference in Grand Forks, then I would probably support it because it would bring the parents and the other youth and, and we could actually host it. But to send them an individual, we had, uh, we do have an awesome piano player, um, in town and, and I remember um, years ago when we had the, um, grant and aid, sometimes called community chess, by the way, if you've ever played, um, Monopoly. But, um, that was, could go to Ottawa, um, to go back east to play, but it didn't meet the criteria. If they're looking for something like that, that's why the city of Grand Forks put forward a hundred thousand dollars to, um, fund the startup of the Phoenix Foundation so that they could deal with, with, um, the grant and aid part of it. And those funds are, are there. Um, you have to meet certain criteria. But I've sat through hours upon hours in, in one meeting, um, trying to decide who's getting the fifty dollars, who wants the fifteen hundred dollars, and it's, it's a non-stop show. And even if you put in deadlines, somebody's going to come up. So either you do it all or you don't do any of it, right? So.
Counselor Thompson?
Uh, with respect, Counselor Crogg, the, uh, request is not frigid personally. It is, uh, to support the apartment of B C alumni society. So it's not, it's not, would not be a direct contribution to his benefit.
Correct. Counselor Ross?
All right, so perhaps I'm closing the debate.
Depends on what you say.
Yeah. I'm rebutting. You know, not everything has to be about, like, about payback to the community, like, great, short-term. Like, when I did my little report, it was about, it was about healing our society and our environment. And not everything has to, you know what the problem that we've got to? Two neoliberal agendas. Federal and global. It's something called The Death of the Liberal Class. It's an amazing book and most people should read it. The neoliberal agenda, that everything has to come down to the bottom line. That we run our communities and we run our country, we run the world like it's a business. Like, everybody, corporations now are deemed individuals. You know, we can't put a dollar and cents on this, on this. And it is an investment. An investment in our youth is an investment for tomorrow, for our, for everybody. And I, I don't want to repeat myself here, but if, let's model responsible, like, let's bring politi- let's get the politics out of the gutter, which is all about the dollar and cents, and make it again about the people. You know, there's this saying in the World Trade Organization that all people are, are, all people are, are equal, but some people are more equal than others. You know, like, it's like, it's, it's like, it's, you know, it's, it's, we, we need to start investing in our youth. We need to start investing in modeling a caring society that's more forward-thinking. And I, I just really, I, I think that we, you know, let's be more creative here in Grand Forks. I would, I agree with Counselor Thompson and I would like to, um, perhaps refer this to staff and invite Mr. Noseworthy, Noseworthy, is it?
Noseworthy.
Noseworthy to come and explain to us, you know, how we can help him and whether or not there's a small dollar value in that. I'm sure that we can be creative enough to find something in our, in a line item for their sake. Let's find a line item where this fits, where we can you know, contribute a few hundred dollars and, and then in the future, start being more mindful about how we, um, encourage civics in our future generations.
One last. Because it's, it's new. It's new. Okay, fine. Don't even turn that on. I don't need it. So, um, my original statement, my original objection was that it is a youth parliament. So shouldn't parliament be paying for it? Now, if you come forward and you want to support the youth of the community and you wanted the same amount of funds for a, um, youth council, like a city council of the youth to, to get them interested, that makes way more sense to me than funding something that, um, that is a miniature version of a, uh, provincial and, and federal bit of legislation, not a community legislation, so.
Counselor Allen?
I agree with, with everything that I heard. I, I, I think that we, we should invite Mr. Noseworthy to come to council. And here what he has to say, how much he's looking for, and perhaps council, and even through publicity from these televised meetings, will assist him in fundraising. Perhaps we don't have to come up from the city with funds that we don't have a budget for, but perhaps we can assist him in other areas of fundraising or direct him in the right location or just by sheer publicity, help him get his target.
Oh, okay, I'll talk to me. I, I don't think we have the capacity right now, um, for a youth arm of council. I think maybe in a year or so we might. But this is something that we could ask Mr. Noseworthy to come back with and say, you know, go and, and learn and find other models when you're out, um, networking with other youth from across Canada. And one of your, one of the tasks that we can assign him with is to find out a model for youth government and bring it to us so that we, through his leadership, can develop their own and his own youth arm of council. So it's not something that we initiate. It's youth-initiated, so it becomes truly theirs.
I'll just, uh,
No, done.
No, anyways, no, it's something completely different. Like, seriously, I'm serious this time. And I guess the main issue I've always had is the grant and aid. Um, what about the other requests that we've had to, um, for the four or five youths, um, to support them to, um, go to their provincials? We, we've had that request too for funding.
You weren't there.
No, it's, it's, oh, so if they come and that's what, you're going to invite them to make a thing? And then is anybody going to say no, other than me?
We don't know.
Yes. But what about the other group?
If we're talking about civics, this is very specific to civics.
To support.
To civics. Be very specific.
Okay, so we don't support any other youth except them as they go to city?
Well, let's start with something instead of throwing all of it out. It's civics.
Okay.
We're having fun for you.
Yeah, actually, this is the most fun.
Counselor Butler?
Let's just call the question and move on.
What is it?
The question was to receive for information and discussion. I think we had that motion on the table.
Uh, we, yes, we do. Uh, we discussed it. At the end.
Yeah, and we asked the staff to invite Mr. Noseworthy to come to the next meeting and, and.
That wasn't on the table.
No. Okay, all in favor to receive it for information? So carry it? So now does somebody want to make a motion to direct it to staff?
I'll make a motion that, um, we invite Mr. Noseworthy to come forward to, to council, um, and talk publicly about how much it is he needs and what the funds are going to be used for. And we try to assist in helping him find those donations.
So are we directing it to staff for more information? When Mr. Nosey, Noseworthy presents?
I'm not sure if we can if it's not in the budget in the first place, but I think we can help him out.
Let's direct it to our C O, Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, if you would like to invite into council to explain a little bit more of the program? And I think that would just be so that the council could understand the dynamics behind the program. I think that would help council then decide what they want to do moving forward. So I think just if you want to invite him to come make a presentation, that would be the first step. So that's what I would recommend. If you're going to make a motion, that you, you and staff on behalf of council can invite him to, uh, council meeting or committee, the whole meeting.
To explore it further.
I'll make that motion.
Your second, we already have a motion.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Counselor Butler?
Three, Mr. Mayor, to staff, just some clarifications.
Three, Mr. Mayor, to staff, just some clarification on the rules of the meeting. Are we allowed to let the public speak at this point in the meeting or we have to wait for question period?
Mr. Mayor, uh, at any point when there's a, um, uh, a, a question on the floor and council wants to pass a unanimous decision of council to engage the public to speak, you can do that, but a committee of the whole, you can engage at your, at your leisure.
So, Counselor Thompson.
I, I just wanted, uh, council to be aware that the Phoenix Foundation did make a contribution to Mr. Knowsworthy in twenty thirteen.
Twenty fourteen.
Counselor Ross.
Twenty fourteen.
Actually, I'm correct, twenty fourteen.
Um, I just want to get Mr. Knowsworthy here and have him do, um, uh, a presentation that further legitimizes his request. And then we're back to saying, well, it sounds like it would really, it would be a great idea to fund him for a few hundred dollars, but we don't have the budget or policy. So can we somehow figure out ahead of time, is there discretion, any discretionary line item? There, there, every budget in organization has a discretionary funds for special projects or things that come up that we don't see.
Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, it is always a privilege of council to make a decision that you decide to make. You know, you do have policies and, policies and bylaws in place to give a structure to operate. You set your own financial plan, you do these things, so as a council you can make these decisions. When, when council decides to make policy passing into the future, they make it based off of their experiences in the past to help the council move forward with making these decisions. So, uh, Counselor, uh, Ross is correct that there is the ability to do that. If council decides to make an expenditure as a group, you can make that expenditure. You can make a motion that you're going to deviate from your policy and that you would be making a motion or a, asking him to request a service to bring back to you or a report to understand what the dynamics are related to the youth in, in parliament in British Columbia. So there is, there is an avenue that you can look at this, but I think it's something that's important that, uh, for council to consider this from a, Counselor Croft pointed out, you will get a lineup out the door. I can promise you that, there will be, that's why council put the policy in place is because it didn't stop. The last council I was working with, there was just an ongoing influx of letters coming in for support, for, for different reasons and all great causes. And I think that's the important thing to do is there's not one bad cause that they, that they saw.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any other further discussion? May I have the recorder please read back the last motion?
Can we need a seconder for the motion?
Counselor Ross, second it. Can I?
Um, your worship, I have resolved that council directs staff to invite Jacob Knowsworthy to make a presentation to council with regard to his request for funds to further his opportunities with the youth parliament of B C Alumni Society program.
Is that motion included that we, for further discussion and?
Yes, so I'm not sure to say clarify, do we want to have it committee the whole or at council?
We'd better committee it all.
I think so too.
Counselor Croft.
Yeah, I'll actually support the motion. And, and the organization, and, and I don't know if I'm just misspeaking or whatever. That organization, um, if it's the B C level, there's one at the federal level. There are other, um, city council, um, prep, um, organizations and stuff up there. And, and I'm not saying it's not a worthy cause and it's, it's not a, um, uh, a useful, uh, project or whatever. It's just that it's, it's, you know, should we have the taxpayers pay for that? But I will support it, um, if that's the role of council that wants to see the presentation. I've, I've had presentations on, on the youth parliament before. But yeah, that will, that's helpful.
So, Counselor Thompson.
Just one, one quick comment is we're not making a commitment. We're just asking him to make a presentation. So there's no, no commitment whatsoever of, of funding.
Yeah, I fully understand that. And it's just gonna be harder.
For you to say no.
So, all in favor of that motion?
Sure.
So carried. All opposed. Counselor Butter, opposed.
You don't have to record those.
Our next, our next in, but information item is from Peter Smith, an invitation to the mayor for Grand Master's official visiting Greenwood on Saturday, April the eleventh. And I would like a motion for to receive this for information. Counselor Croft, Counselor Ross, any debate or discussion? All in favor? So carried. We'll now move on to our bylaws section. It recommends council that the amended schedule two dash A one of the municipal ticketing and information bylaw nineteen fifty seven be given the first three readings. Can I have a motion? Counselor Thompson. Do I have a second? Counselor Ross, debate. All in favor? So carried. Again, again, manager of building inspection and bylaw services that council recommends a motion to the amended schedule four dash A one of the municipal ticketing and information bylaw nineteen fifty seven again to be given the first three readings. May I have a motion for that? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Butter. Any debate or discussion? All in favor? So carried. Uh, do we have any late items? Yes, we have a lead item. Counselor Butter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I said earlier, at the committee of the whole meeting this morning, we heard a presentation from Mr. Smith regarding the deer committee and their request for a motion from council to enforce the deer feeding bylaw. So I'd like to make that motion.
Do I have a second? Counselor Hammond. Debate, discussion. All in favor? So carried. We now arrive at the time of the evening when we take questions from the public and the media. Gentlemen in front, please.
Peter Matheson. I'm confused that Mr. Murray Shagan's, uh, recommendation to adopt the resolution in light of the garden, the learning garden, was to have come up tonight?
That's the meeting, the meeting minutes.
Is that, is that not something?
February twenty ninth meeting.
I know, but it's, and it says at, at the March ninth regular meeting of council. I thought there was, was gonna be adopted or, or.
Have you been interrupting that and staff?
Yes. It was where, I think the, uh, the meeting minutes are to be adopted, so the, uh, um, if something was missed in that respect, it'd be, uh, um, I just don't have the answer at this point, but I think if there was a resolution that was required, it was introduced to committee at the whole and then would it be referred to this meeting? Is that what I'm?
It was the February twenty ninth meeting.
That's what it seems to seem, but I haven't had the document.
The, the, I think if it was missing, the agenda, what would happen is the, uh, the doc, the, it would be referred to be March, sorry, March the twenty third agenda. So for council's consideration. I apologize if we missed it in that respect, but, uh, if it was at committee as a whole, it would, uh, just make this meeting go down to the March twenty third.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is that satisfying, Mr. Mathes? Counselor Butter.
I'm confused as to what you're asking. I'd like to hear about it. So there was a motion made by Counselor Shagan to talk about the learning gardens tonight?
Recommends council consider adopting a resolution stating the city of Grand Forks commits to supporting the learning garden at the aquatic centers through collaboration and kind support, including et cetera, at the March ninth, twenty fifteen, regular meeting of council.
Oh, so it was made at the committee of the whole meeting and then we never passed it at a regular meeting, is what you're saying?
That's just closing to us tonight.
Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, what we can do is, uh, if council would like to add it as a late item tonight, you discussed it at the, uh, you discussed it at committee of the whole, uh, back in.
Delegation was here on the, was the last count committee at the whole.
So the only thing I can say, if, if it's important, if it's, if it's time sensitive, we could have that motion put on the table tonight. Uh, you could actually amend, uh, make an amendment to bring that into that.
Or could we table it to another?
If it's, if it's urgent, if not, we can bring it back at the March twenty third meeting.
Yeah, council doesn't have any documentation in front of us, so it would be.
Yeah, the presentation happened, I think the, the support statement I was looking for was the, um, if I recall, was the in-kind support and the other elements associated with the learning garden. So we could, uh, we could have the information prepared to council and have it for the next meeting.
That would be highly appreciated. Okay, anyone else from the gallery? Gentlemen in the back.
Uh, that's right, I was just trying to point out earlier on, when you were discussing Mr. Knowsworthy's letter, that he was watching the whole thing and he would love to come in and, and make a presentation to you. That's it, that's it.
Thank you for being on. Mr. Mathes.
Peter Matheson, again, I, on that note about Jacob, I think it would be great to have him come and for information, make a presentation. I heard these two of the counselors had a couple bucks in their pockets and perhaps the viewership and perhaps the gallery might have enough to maybe make a difference.
Sounds good, thank you. Gentlemen in the second row.
Hamilton, James Hamilton. I was listening to Mr. Croft's comment that, uh, parliament should really pay for encouraging the, what is it, the junior youth parliament of B C Alumni, Alumni Society. And I noticed the government constantly offers percentage grants to municipalities with the proviso that the city must pay a portion from their own funds. Now, if the junior youth parliament of B C Alumni Society was offered, that the city would match a government grant up to a certain limit, it would be, it might be a little cruel, it's possible, but it might be challenging enough that if that alumni, alumni, sorry, it's society, not alumni. God forbid. If the Alumni Society could be given the opportunity to approach and, uh, parliament with, uh, that proviso that this city would also match whatever the, the parliament would, would bring forward, up to a three hundred or five hundred dollars or whatever. That's just a thought. It's kind of like the shoe on the other foot, they're always doing it to you. Do it to them.
Thank you, Mr. Matheson. Gentlemen in the back.
Ray Hanson. Uh, I was directed this to, uh, Counselor Thompson. I'm curious as to know whether the people that you have appointed to the water rates are all citizens of the city or property owners in the city.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, uh, your worship. Uh, Mr. Hanson, with the exception of Dan Zabinsky, uh, who was the former chief management officer of this city, uh, all appointees are residents of the city.
Thank you.
Counselor Butter, is that satisfying? Counselor Butter.
For your staff, Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering if I'm at liberty to talk about this committee? I know some of it was in camera and I'm just not sure.
I believe we, uh, it was the other camera, February tenth, the regular meeting that we made at housekeeping room.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's right, you did make that discussion.
Yeah, so it was not in camera.
Okay, well, I just, I just wanted to point out that it wasn't this council that appointed that committee. It came from previous council.
Counselor Thompson.
Yes, I, I just, council just reaffirmed those appointments.
Yes, and reference back to the February tenth regular meeting. Do we have any other questions from the gallery? Then I guess we're at the point of the meeting, can I put a motion to adjourn? Counselor Thompson. All in favor?